A separate section of the auditorium for people who are unregistered and they should be sitting there and that should not be counted, but more than that, only registered voters have the small cards. And so, please hold those cards up when you're being counted. That just ensures that you are registered voters and we're not counting unregistered people. It's a good question, sir. Are we ready to vote? Bill, are we ready to vote? All right, would all in favor of the motion, please stand. Two hundred and fifty six, yeah. Okay, I think everybody who was in favor has been counted. We will now count those people opposed. Would all opposed, please stand. Gentlemen, have a seat, thank you.
Uh... complicated, but...
The count is this. Three hundred and seventy-seven in favor, a hundred and one opposed. The first motion is carried. We will now vote on the second motion, dealing with the library expansion engineering plan, as a bonding article, as you know. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Uh, huh. As you know, we gotta count this if it's not unanimous. And, and, well, I know, I hear a lot of people yelling no. So let's try it again. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
All right. Now, now, wait a minute, now, let's give them their due. They're absolutely capable of doing this. Would all people opposed, please stand. I'll tell you what, what I'd like you to do is if you're not voting, sit down wherever there's a seat, and if you're voting, stand up. It's hard for me to count people when you're walking around, so if you're voting no, please stand, if not, please sit down. Thank you. Would all in favor, please stand. I counted a hundred and fifty yeses, nineteen noes, the motion is carried. So we'll record that as a hundred and fifty yeses, nineteen noes. Okay, uh, you're standing at a microphone, you waiting to speak at the next article? We're ready to move on.
Uh, no, I was going to ask your indulgence to make a very brief comment about the issue of bonding and why I voted against it.
Um...
Not more than one minute. No.
No, wait, wait, I appreciate the help that everybody's giving me here. If you hadn't done that, you see, you wouldn't have aggravated me, and I wouldn't have let him speak. Try to keep it to thirty seconds, okay?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I think the notion that the town wants something, but isn't willing to raise the tax rate three cents to do it, and therefore philosophically junks the whole idea of liberalization and says, "Well, I want it, but I don't want to pay the taxes for it, so instead I'll pay debt."
Ma'am, so what are you rising?
I move that we consider Article 29 next.
Well, it's a little bit motion, do I hear a second? Any discussion of the motion, why do we want to do this? Ma'am, you want to tell us why, you want to speak to your motion, you can if you wish.
I would like, I think that the town, a lot of people who are here tonight are here for that article, and I would like to vote on that article.
Well, okay, Ms. Groh...
I guess I am really opposed to single-issue people, and what I'm hearing here is an attempt to move this to accommodate single-issue people, so I vote, I move that we don't do this.
Speaking against it, I guess you're not moving it. Yes, Mr. Hunter.
Mr. Moderator, I'm not gonna take any position whether it should be moved or not, but if we do take out of order and go to the school budget, I would ask the rest of you to consider that there's a lot of town business to be done, and ask you to stay for the other business, and if you don't stay for it, I'd ask that your withdrawal is sufficiently orderly that you do not disturb the meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Cadillac? I'm sorry, I'll recognize the lady at the back first, I think you were standing first.
There may be single-issue people here who do have a concern about leaving, but I would like to reiterate the concern that's been voiced by parents over and over again last year and this year. A large part of the issue has to do with the availability of babysitting, that we have to be home at nine-thirty or ten o'clock and are not permitted, our right, our democratic right, to vote on many of the issues because of the structure of town meeting, and we feel at the very least that these demands that are placed on us by raising our families deserve some consideration.
Mr. Moderator, I would urge people not to vote for this. What we do here at town meeting tonight is one half of the problem, you're gonna have an override to deal with, and a lot of people vote for the override who are not here, overrides a secret ballot and so on, and those who are concerned about getting as much money as possible to the local schools may be well advised not to aggravate a large part of this population.
Gentlemen at the back.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I've sat through twenty-seven years of town meetings, to the bitter end, when there was only a handful of people here, and I think it's inappropriate to move this question ahead of others.
Edward Adelman, Old Stone Brook Road. I, I agree with the last speaker. I have two children in the Acton public schools, but I'm also very interested in Ice House Pond, and I'm sure we are residents of a town and we need to work as one town meeting, so I move, I vote against this motion.
All right, I, I think we've discussed it enough, we'll take a vote. All in favor of this motion to move Article, what is it, twenty-nine? For discussion now, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Motion is lost. We'll move on to Article twenty-six. Mr. Mullin moves that the town appropriate the sum of thirty thousand dollars to be expended by the town manager for dredging and related work to provide for outdoor recreation at Ice House Pond, and to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen be authorized to borrow thirty thousand dollars under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section seven-twenty-five. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We move and seconded Mr. Mullin to your article. Do you have slides to show, Mr. Mullin?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
I will try to be very brief. I'm pleased to come to you and tell you that this is a, an article that is cash flow positive, so, anyway, if we could have the slides start to, just briefly on Ice House Pond, I know a number of people aren't that familiar with it. It was created in seventeen ninety-seven by damming of, of Nishova Brook for a sawmill. The pond was not used for harvesting until eighteen eighty-six, with blocks being cut and then conveyed to an ice house directly adjacent to the pond. What you have here is a picture of the parking lot with the sign saying, indicating that it's, uh, Town of Acton Land. The natural accumulation of sediment created by Nishova Brook and deposited in the pond was considered slow until the introduction of water chestnut, and with a depth of less than four feet and a sediment thickness ranging from one to three feet, the pond provides a prime environment for the growth of this water chestnut. In warm weather, the water chestnut begins to spread a dense mat of floating plants across the surface, which you can see, of the water. The plants inhibit the transfer of oxygen from the atmosphere, thereby reducing the amount of dissolved oxygen in the water. Without sunlight, the native submerged vegetation dies and consumes oxygen as it decomposes. This results in the production of methane and hydrogen sulfide to noxious gases that create an extremely unpleasant environment for the surrounding area. That's the background. That's the problem. I'm gonna just briefly talk about four quick points. Philosophical support for the article, the quality of life, the financial impact and the future, very quickly. Philosophical argument, I think, is both, is, is great, most directly manifested by this being a priority of the master plan process, as you can see from the slide, says that water-related recreation is limited, and it specifically says down here, "To develop recreational facilities on Ice House Pond as a recommendation of the master plan." Anybody who's been, been down there and, and seen it from, and skated there, it's, it's a fun place to go, it's a fun place to, to walk. Unfortunately, you know, certainly there's no swimming with, doing with the water chestnut there, however, it is a pleasant place to be for ice skating. That ice skating is now being inhibited by the creation of this water chestnut as well. Okay, the, let's talk about the, the cash flow analysis, and this, I think, to my mind, this is as simple, as simple can be. It's gonna cost us thirty thousand dollars to de-water and dredge this thing. There's three to four feet of silt on the bottom. You take out the silt, there's a value to the silt, it's nine dollars per cubic yard. There's thirteen thousand dollars per cubic yard, thirteen thousand of silt available. We then take the silt up to North Acton Recreation Area, the quarry where we have a storage area, and we can use that over the course of the next ten years. I've conservatively projected that out, using the silt over ten years, assuming an eight percent discount rate, which is sort of the current thirty-year bond, it's seven forty-two as of today, and it yields a net present value of seventy-eight thousand odd. In other words, we create money from this deal. Does anybody have any questions? I give you my word as a salesman, that is true. Why bond? Okay, there's three reasons for bonding. It matters, you know, from a banking perspective, you match the, the life of the asset with the liability. In this case, the benefit of dredging the pond has a, a very long life, but we've chosen to do is to do a ten-year bonding on this. The bond's repayment schedule actually matches the, the cash flow that we're going to generate. The benefit from not expending the money on the, on the silt, the loom, that we would normally spend, roughly matches what the payments would be on the bond. Finally, this is, this is a case that should not be lost. The whole reason for our ability to address these issues this year is part of this bonding program. We have had, we have a hidden asset on our balance sheet, and that's debt capacity. This is, this taps in along with some of the others into some of that debt capacity to allow us to do projects that we wouldn't otherwise do. We would not be able to do this out of current revenue. The project is supported by the master plan, and it is, is supported by the usage of the People for Recreation Area. It reverses the deterioration and eliminates these noxious odors for the neighborhood. If you live in that neighborhood, you would want that to happen. Uh, I'm sorry, the second point was reverse the deterioration and continues to allow it to be used for recreational purposes, for ice skating and for hiking and things like that. And it creates more cash than it uses.
Mr. Mullin, does that finish your presentation? It does. Okay. Other comment on this article from the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted to not recommend this article.
Um, yes ma'am. The front microphone.
Mickey Williams, Five Horseshoe Drive. I have a question and then I have a comment. My first question is for the Finance Committee, and why did you choose not to recommend this
The cash flow possession, if we saw that explicitly set forth on the revenue side of the budget, then we would talk about it.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Moderator, I'd like to make a comment. This is a case of IMB, which is in my backyard, I live on Horseshoe Drive, which is right across from the pond. I'd just like to make four points on why I think we should support this article. First of all, last night we voted to repair the bridge that goes, that Concord Road travels over the pond at that point, last night, so we're going to have to take the water out of the pond anyway to repair it, I think this is a golden opportunity to dredge the pond at that time. Second of all, as Mr. Mullin said, it is one of the few water recreation areas in, in Acton, and it is certainly the only one in Acton Center. Thirdly, it's a habitat for many wild animals, as well as a fishing area for many young anglers, and I know many of the people in our neighborhood do fish down there, as well as adults, when they could. And fourthly, this is man-made eutrophication, it's runoff from fields and from septic sewers that's causing this growth of the water chestnuts, and I think if we cause the problem, we ought to clean it up. Thank you.
Also, start around the back, and go this way, lady at the back microphone.
Marilyn Leeds, Bromfield Road. Tied into what Mickey Williams just said, I had two questions, because of the issue with the Concord Street Bridge, which was Concord Road Bridge, which has already been approved, there's discussion here about a flood control structure. I have one question, which is the failure of having adequate flood control lead to subsequent damage of the new rebuilt bridge, and secondly, if the two projects are coordinated and done together, can that reduce the total cost of the dredging and the work that needs to be done on the pond?
Mr. Mullin.
I'll give you my opinion on whether it will hurt the bridge, and I'd say that it would be no. Anybody differ? Okay. And as, we've investigated working together to do them, the process for doing the dredging is going to take about a year, you have to de-water it and leave it, and, and then the silt gets to a consistency that makes it removable, so there are not any great efficiencies in working those together.
Lady at the front microphone.
Patricia Sawyer, one-twenty-seven Concord Road. I read somewhere that you help people out that aren't used to speaking. I think Mickey said it very adequately for me, but I wonder how many of you were here in nineteen seventy-nine, when we bought the pond, for forty-five thousand dollars, for recreation, and it's not just the skating, it's the canoeing we used to do there and the boating, and I don't know if herons have ankles, but the heron that stands over there all summer now is, it's only about up to its ankles looking for fish. There is no fish in, in that pond anymore because the pond is dead. It must be dredged to create oxygen in the water, to have wildlife over there. I wonder how many of you have said to your children sometime, "Why do you buy something if you're not going to take care of it?" Thank you.
Mr. Fingerman.
Free Fingerman, One Nighter Road. I have two questions for Mr. Mullin. First, the summary of the article talks to a forty thousand dollar sum that may or may not be available from FEMA, and second, on the positive cash flow, are, is it our intention to sell that silt at, and bring in the hundred thousand dollars plus that you described, or is it just means that we won't have to buy it when we would otherwise have to down the road?
Answering your second question first is, yes, your, your statement is correct, that it's, we're not going to buy it, still affects cash flow, but it is not going to sell it. And that's, that's why I did the NPV calculation, rather than say, you know, obviously if you take nine times thirteen thousand dollars, a hundred and seventeen thousand, but effectively if you cash flow that back, it's worth seventy-eight thousand dollars in today's dollars. But the answer is that we're not going to sell it. But it's still a benefit because we don't have to appropriate money to pay for that. The second, the first part is whether the forty thousand dollars is, is the subject here, and it is not. A side benefit of the dredging is that after Hurricane Bob, and there was some flooding in that area, we went to FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, and we will be able to get some funding from FEMA, let me make sure that's clear, is that we are in the process of, of the, of seeking a grant to receive funds to do the, the control structure. As of now, the FEMA is indicating that they will approve that, but it has not been done as of yet, and if, that will be a side benefit of dredging this, is that if we dredge it, then FEMA will say that this excess water that comes in on a heavy storm can then go to the three or four feet of benefit from the silt, and will be a flood control benefit to us, and thus, we think that we're going to get the forty thousand dollars. It's not the subject of this article.
Gentlemen at the front microphone.
Two of the ladies that talked prior to myself seemed to me to have made point. I hear about the water chestnuts. Well, I happen to be trained at the graduate level in environmental engineering, and the problem with the Ice House Pond is due to a process that one of the ladies mentioned, lyophilization, okay? Or the killing of the pond due to the excessive phosphates that are being fed into the pond from upstream, from the residents and the stores upstream. Now, we're talking about dredging the pond, selling, or whatever, with a, with a return on investment for coming back to the town, quote-quote, supposedly. I find it as a, as a registered professional engineer, I find it very difficult to believe that that pond is ever going to be dredged for the forty thousand from FEMA and the thirty thousand dollar cash flow for a bond from the town. Five years from now, let's assume that it's done, five years from now, the waters are still going to be flowing in from upstream, and the lyophilization, but the, due to the excess phosphates, will keep to feed, be feed, will continually be fed into the, into Ice House Pond, and the condition will resurrect itself over in the, ten years from now, seven years from now, the, the problem will be right back there. So I have to question the, the chestnut problem, okay? It's lyophilization due to the phosphates. Now, the solution of that is back into our own Department of Public Health within the town to lean on to those people from the environmental engineering from the environmental engineering standpoint, lean on those people that are polluting. None, maybe not intentionally, but to find, solve the problem that way, not coming in this way with a cash flow and a bond of $40,000 that has to be paid back anyway in years to come. Just defraying the expenses. Now, would our, our speaker care to challenge my question about the lyophilization and the phosphates rather than the water chestnuts?
Well, I happen to have a PhD in lyophilization.
Fine.
No, I'm...
No.
I, no, to be serious, I cannot dispute your assertion. Uh, you know, Frank, we have had several studies done on this and, uh, you know, it's confirmed by this. To my mind, what is the cause of the deterioration is not really the issue.
Oh, wait a minute.
Wait, just one second, if you may. Because it is going to be our policy from now forward to draw down the dredged pond each spring for a period starting in April and ending in June. Uh, so specifically to make sure that this does not recur, uh, this, this maintenance program will, will be designed to make sure that none of this occurs again.
I'm sorry, sir, I can't agree with you. You're going to drain the pond down. Oh, fine, okay, but I'm entitled to my opinion technically, engineering-wise. You're going to drain the pond down, but meanwhile, all the fast phosphates that's been carried in all summer long are now deposited there within the sludge as solid phosphates, okay? You're not getting doing anything by draining the pond down, okay? To me, you'd have to redredge it that each year in order to get rid of it. I stand complete. Thank you, sir.
Uh, I'll, you know, let me recognize the gentleman from the Finance Committee and then we'll continue around our rotation. Yes.
I'm Sidney Johnston, speaking personally, not for the Finance Committee, but I would like to discuss some of the issues which were before the Finance Committee, which were very similar to those brought up by the last speaker. There is an engineering plan for Ice House Pond in the library. And I believe the introductory paragraphs of that plan answer the questions of how Ice House Pond should be dealt with and the eutrophication that we're seeing there. Back in the old days, possibly colonial, possibly more recently, Ice House Pond was apparently drained every summer and used to grow hay. The hay was a cash crop. And then in the fall, the dam was spilt, the flashboards were put back on the dam and the pond dammed and the Shobba Brook dammed in order to provide ice for the winter. By cycling the area between meadow and pond, meadow in the summer and pond in the winter, silting apparently was not a problem. Apparently, silting became a problem when the pond became a year-round pond. So some of the thinking in the Finance Committee's deliberations were that the pond should be drained in the summer and used as a meadow and dammed in the winter and used for ice skating, as it was in the old days before the problem developed. The, if, if, for example, grass were grown and cut and sold, then some of the phosphates that have gone in from septic leach fields would be removed in the form of hay in the fall. One suggestion was that at the draining of the pond, there'd be a Colonial Day ceremony. And at the harvesting of the hay, there'd be a Colonial Day ceremony. The problem would go away and the town could institutionalize remembrance of Colonial Days. As far as the flood control goes, we believe that the flood control is probably a serious problem and should be dealt with in a comprehensive and sensible manner. And the engineering plan in the library did not seem to address that problem. And nothing in the warrant appears to address it. There, there's apparently a difficulty in the maintenance of flood control. What you would want to do is if a rainstorm or hurricane is on the way, pull the flashboards and let the pond drain down. And then when the hurricane comes and fills it up again, it doesn't over top the spillway and damage the structure of the dam. And we believe that there has not been sufficient planning and attention given to the details of carrying out such a program.
All right, the gentleman at the front microphone.
Uh, yes, William Hill, 55 Concord Road. I am chairman of the Conservation Commission of Acton, but I'm speaking personally. I'm in favor of this article. It makes sense. Uh, many of us, many people are here tonight to discuss the, to discuss the schools because they believe there's a generational responsibility to make things a little better for our children. And for that same reason, this article makes a lot of sense. Uh, from a point of view of recreational use, canoeing, angling, ice skating, those things speak for themselves. From the point of view of teaching our children of great natural resources, of places for, where wildlife congregate, it is a great treasure. It's a resource that this town is lucky to have. It makes sense from a financial point of view. Uh, it makes sense for the sake of our children. I recommend that people vote in favor of the article. Thank you.
Lady at the back microphone.
Um, Jan Audrey, New Shobba Road. Uh, a lot of my questions have been answered, but, um, there was mention made of draining down the pond every year in order to, I assume that's to prevent the roots from taking hold. Uh, my question is, what effect does this have on the wildlife in that area? That's one question. I, that's going to cost us an amount of money every year. And my question is, if it indeed, the problem is indeed, um, oh, what's the word I'm looking for? Caused by the phosphates and the septic, has anything been considered or can anything be done to correct those problems? I've lived here since 1969. I don't recall, I may be wrong, that it was plowed during the time that I've lived here. And yet, there was a long period of time when the pond was fine and there wasn't a problem. And suddenly, over the past however many years, it's, it's become a problem. And I guess I'm not quite sure why now all of a sudden. And wouldn't it be more cost-effective to correct the situation that's causing it rather than just to continue to deal with it?
You've gone over my level of expertise.
All right, Mr. Mullin, just for the fun of it, were you answering a question that she asked?
Yeah.
What, a specific question? Go ahead then. Normally, you kind of ask me if you can do it, but it's all right. Go ahead.
Well, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask you to defer to somebody who's more technically oriented, either Dean or Tom.
Do I answer the question that she asked?
Yeah.
Okay. Fine.
Um, Dean Chatter, Municipal Properties Director. Um, there's a couple of issues as far as management of the pond. Um, the, the traditional method of management, going back to the 1930s, and I've spoken with people who actually helped cut ice down there back in the 30s, used to skip school to do it. Uh, apparently what was done was the pond was drawn down every spring. Uh, the silt was allowed to dry a certain amount. They used a tractor with a small bog harrow to harrow the sides. And they used an ox team to harrow up the bottom in the wetter areas. This was done not as an attempt to grow any kind of a crop, and in fact, no crop, so far as I can tell, was ever grown there. It was merely an attempt to cut down on the weed growth because it's such a shallow pond. The idea being that it was pretty hard to sell ice if it had pond lilies in it. So that, so far as I've been able to ascertain, there was never any kind of a crop deliberately planted there. Uh, there is some wording in the report that was prepared primarily by Tom Tidman, but also I assisted in this, which refers to raking out some of the hay. But that really is, is probably an obscure piece of wording. What we really meant by that was, was pulling out this weedy growth on a periodic basis. Um, we've done a lot of testing. We did 140 test borings through the ice two winters ago to ascertain the depth of silt. We found about one to three feet of silt there, which probably is the deposition that's occurred since the last ice age was ceded. So eight to 10,000 years of deposition of silt. The real problem, certainly phosphates are a problem in a lot of our water. I would defer to the Health Department about whether there is a serious water quality issue there. I don't believe that there is. The more pressing problem is the growth of water chestnut, which is a non-native invasive species, first identified in the Sudbury River area about 1850. Uh, included in our report is some extensive information we got from the state about some really outrageous efforts that they made back up until about the mid-1950s in an attempt to control this. It's a very serious problem in shallow water bodies and they've dealt with it quite a bit over at Great Meadows. Um, chemicals were the, the solution that they used extensively back then and for a lot of reasons, it's, it's not under consideration now. Um, we have a strange situation, sort of akin to gypsy moth. I mean, here's a, an alien species that has come into an area and they're no natural predators. Nothing will eat this stuff. So really, the only way to control it is through dredging, deeping the water column. And periodically, it will have to be drawn down. There will be a management plan for the pond. And if we're going to run this thing, it's just like mowing your grass. From time to time, it's going to have to be maintained.
Yes, Mrs. Segoff.
Um, Charlotte Segoff, Main Street. I would like to call a que, I would like to make a motion that we follow the question.
Do I hear a second? All in favor of cutting off debates, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no. Debate is cut off. We will vote for the motion as read. Uh, once again, it needs to be unanimous or it needs to be carried. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no.
No.
Okay, it isn't unanimous. Let's try it one more time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no.
No.
Okay, with all opposed, please stand. I know I'm getting older. I count to 10, no's. With all in favor, please stand. As luck will have it, I count 150 yeses again. And 10 no's, the most is carried. Article 27.
Mr. Moderator.
Where do I hear the, yes, Mr. Patterson.
I have a few words just before we go to Article 27.
A few words relating to what, Mr. Patterson?
Last article that we just voted on.
Uh, if they're very brief because...
Very, very, very...
Go ahead, Mr. Patterson.
Mr. Mullin said he had a deal for us. He's going to take the sludge from the pond to Nagog Road, uh, Quarry Road, where we're going to have to take a pond so we can introduce the water chestnuts to the pond. We'll drain Ice House Pond. We'll get the water chestnuts, then we'll take them out of the pond up there and let them grow back in there. We've got, we've got a good deal, $7,000 or $8,000 every five or six years. Good deal.
Okay. Article 27, dealing with Minuteman Regional School Assessment. We're using the second motion here, I guess. Mr. Welce moves, is Mr. Welce here? Yes, good, thank you. Mr. Welce moves that Minuteman, that the Minuteman Technical School Assessment for the period July 1st, 1994 to June 30th, 1995 in the amount of $497,000, $496,000, be raised and appropriated. And that an additional amount of $177,868, be raised and appropriated subject to Department of Education certi, certification that the additional funds are required by the Educational Reform Act of 1993. Do I hear a second? All right, it's been moved and seconded. Who's going to speak to the motion? Mr. Welce or Mrs. Tavernier?
I will move, I will speak to it. Uh, this is the first of three school budget articles tonight. Uh, this one, if you noticed, has a contingency number in it. However, it's not contingent on the passage of an override. Uh, we're taking a position as a board on this particular budget article. We normally don't take positions on school budget articles, but this one has a direct impact on our budget. So we have chosen to recommend it to you in this format with the contingency number. Uh, if you notice, the contingency number was 172868. And the reason for that is that there is a general disagreement between Minuteman's assessment as computed by Superintendent Ron Fitzgerald. We have no disagreement with his number. In fact, we rather like his number. It's smaller than what it could be. Uh, but the Department of Education disagrees with his philosophy in computing that number. And it remains, again, as a lot of the ed reform formulas have, up in the air and is, presents a risk for us on the town side of possibly having to come up with an additional $172,000. So what we're suggesting with this article is that we hold aside, protect this $172,000. If the state determines that we indeed need to pay that extra amount, we have it, it has been appropriated, no one is hurt by it. Uh, if the state decides that Ron Fitzgerald's numbers are correct, then the money would flow to free cash at the end of the next fiscal year and it would be available for use the following fiscal year.
Before we have other comment on that, I did make a mistake when I read the article. The second number that I read, I read it as 177868. It's 172868. Excuse me for that error, but assume it's 172868, not 177. Other comment from the Finance Committee, Dr. Donald.
The Finance Committee recommends this article. Pray for Mr. Fitzgerald.
Other comment? All right, seeing nobody standing, uh, let us vote. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no. Motion carries unanimously. I, I think, isn't my place to call for it, but I do think a round of applause for our participation in the vocational school committee would be in order and thank Mr. Welce for his efforts on behalf of the town. We'll now move to the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Assessment. And the motion is, Mrs. Harding Barrett. Excuse me, doctor, is that correct? You wanted me, you want me to read a doctor, is that correct? He begged me to read a doctor last night. Doctor Harding Barrett moves that the town, moves that the Acton-Boxborough School Assessment for the period July 1st, 1994 to June 30th, 1995 in the amount of $8,035,260, be raised and appropriated in its entirety. Do I hear a second? Moved and seconded, Dr. Harding Barrett.
Wish I had a comeback for that, Don, but I'm going to try not to.
You said you'd pay me an extra 20, is what you said. I don't forget those high finance things.
Uh, this year, the school committee engaged in a very... This year, the school committees engaged in a very different budget review process. Each cost center, our department chair, our principals, our program managers presented his or her budget directly to the school committees describing both the program and the financial needs of that program. This process took a full Saturday and many evenings, but we emerged with a total picture of the complex financial system which constitutes our K through 12 public school system. New ways of doing business often are the result of new leadership. It's because of this new leadership this year... It's because of this new leadership this year that the school committees decided to ask the superintendent to present the budget to the town meeting. As with any business, the CEO, not the Board of Directors, presents the budget. Our business is the education of our children, and our CEO is our superintendent. Dr. Zimmerman has asked Bill Ryan to share the presentation with her this year. And, Don, we need a vote.
I'm sorry, what did you want from me now?
Dr. Zimmerman, you need to have a vote.
Oh, yes, fine. We need to have a vote because the Superintendent of Schools is not a resident of the town, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, I think that's fair. All in the favor of hearing from the Superintendent of Schools on this article, please say aye. All who say no. Motion's carried unanimously.
And I'd like, I'd like to present Dr. Zimmerman.
That was a very long moment. Sometimes, when we present school budgets to the community, we focus on the numbers and the limits. But budget development is really a planning process, which stretches over a six-month period, which allows us to assess where we are, where we have been, and where we want to go. It also allows us to understand the effects of the programs and the services we offer, and to measure how successfully we achieve the outcomes we design. We are looking at a very different world for our students than the world we inherited, and we must, as David Thornburg has said, prepare them for their future, not our past. Their future and our future will be very different from what we were educated to expect and educated to be expert at. Central to this new future will be the new economy, with just-in-time learning and hypermation. We will live in an age of mass customization, where being told that everything will be tested in a synthetic environment before a piece of steel is bent. For this new world, we will need students who not only have basic skills, the same kind that we learned in school, but also know how to think critically and creatively, act independently as well as cooperatively, and know how to use technology. Our big challenge is not to figure out how to structure our schools and our classrooms, not how to teach and what to teach, not how to learn and what to learn, but rather how to provide for the increasing number of students who will populate our schools. What you see is a conservative view, which describes what we actually know about the Acton Public Schools' rising enrollment. We use the cohort survival method to project enrollment, a traditional metric which takes into account building in the town and move-ins. But the prospect of the next few years with the number of developments on the drawing boards can actually not be seen here. You are also looking at the total history of choice in the Acton Public Schools. This slide reflects no new choice students for FY 96 and FY 97. We took this picture of the Conan School to demonstrate graphically the growth in student population. The Conan School this year has 474 students. In five years, we have grown one school. Growth at the elementary level, of course, is eventually seen at the secondary level. As the increasing numbers of Acton and Boxborough students enter the junior and senior high school, we will be unable to enroll choice students. That will mean a decline in our revenue. The high school can, with current programs, house 1,500 students, and the junior high, 610. These current programs, which include special education and our technology laboratories, have taken rooms which formerly were used for classrooms, so the capacity of the buildings for regular classrooms has decreased since the original construction of the building. One new perspective we use this year is the amount we spend on each student each year for instructional materials and supplies in classrooms. We increased the junior and senior high school amount by 5% to reflect inflation. When we looked at the elementary schools, we realized that the amount of money spent on this parameter had not changed for six years. It translates into $70 a student today. In order to catch up, we increased the amount to $100. Another new feature this year is a cost center called professional development. This is not to say that in-service opportunities have been unavailable in the past for staff, rather that a coherent program has not been in existence for a long time. We have moved items from individual budgets, like the schools, to this new cost center, and added money to it based on the philosophy which we developed, which is included in the budget books. The reform legislation of 1993 mandates professional development as well as recertification for all certified staff. Originally, the legislation proposed 3% of the personnel budget as a minimum. It's acknowledged that education spends far less in capital and research and development than any other business. The capital investment is $1,000 a year for education compared to $50,000 a year for the average business, and compared to $100,000 to $300,000 in the high-tech industry. That's for every productive worker. Education invests only $2 billion every 10 years versus $30 billion a year in the rest of the United States. In terms of research and development, education invests less than 1% a year versus 2% in the average business, and again, 7% to 20% in the high-technology businesses. If we were investing 2% of the personnel budget in professional development, this slide would show $352,000. As you can see, we're only spending $123,049 kindergarten through 12th grade, or 0.7% of the personnel budget. The proposed Acton Public Schools budget, which is the one which is challenging us at this time, and which has already been cut by $125,000 before we present it to you, is going up 8.8%. Primarily, as you can see, our increases are due to growth. The first line refers to the two items I've just mentioned, the per pupil allocation and professional development. Together, that accounts for, they account for $100,000. Special education tuition, we're paying case tuition two years back, that's how it works. It's two years later that we pay the tuition. That's an increase of $100,000. The remainder, $600,000, is associated with growth, Merriam operating costs, additional staff, decline of choice revenue, and of course, as you know, we have negotiated a contract which does include some salary increases. Having set the stage, I hope that we need more than we have, and more than we're even asking for, I'd like to ask Bill to show you the numbers that we're requesting and how they compare with very recent past. The budget that we're requesting for next year is basically, in the Acton Public Schools' a maintenance budget, which does not restore programs we have already lost, but only maintains those that we currently have.
Thank you, Isa. The slide that we're going to show you will show the percentage of the proposed Acton Public School budget for FY 95, which goes for contracted services, materials and supplies, equipment, and personnel. The first section here, which is contracted services, which is 15.5% of the proposed budget, is allocated for such things as out-of-district sped tuition, legal services, maintenance of equipment and utilities, which would include electricity, gas, water, and telephone. The next piece of the pie, which is materials and supplies, which is approximately 3.7%, and includes instructional materials, textbooks, library books, office supplies, custodial and maintenance supplies. And you can see the next piece is only 0.1%, which is equipment, totaling $11,363. Clearly, this category continues to be underbudgeted. Fortunately, the PTAs and the PTOs have filled the gap somewhat at the elementary level and do a significant amount of purchasing of equipment at the elementary, for the elementary schools. The final piece of the pie is clearly the largest, which is personnel, which includes, again, salaries and fringes. It's approximately 81% of the proposed budget. And again, all salaries and fringe benefits are included in this category. Schools are clearly in the people business, and it is this category which really drives our budget. The bar graph, this bar graph of the proposed Acton Public School budget shows the same categories as the previous pie chart displayed. The graph shows FY 93, actual expenditures, FY 94, approved budget, and the FY 95, proposed budget. As you can see, personnel costs, again, are the largest portion of the budget. This year's budget, if you look at the middle bar graph for FY 94, was essentially level-funded because of the loss of the override last spring. The propos-- Yes, I'm sorry, Charlie.
Mr. Moderator, point of order, we're on chapter, I mean, Article 28, which is the regional budget. You are presenting the wrong budget to us.
We are presenting both budgets as we have in the past.
I haven't seen anything on the region yet, sir.
We will, very soon.
Well, that should be explained upfront, because this article is the regional budget.
Right, I think the budget presentation--
Let me just stop you, because he's made a point of order, and I really have to rule on it. So tell me what you think you're doing, or what you are doing, so that I can understand whether the point of order is valid or not.
The budget presentation that's been prepared really is for both the local and the regional schools, is one K-12 presentation, which includes information on both budgets. It's similar to what we have done in the past, is one presentation, and then voting on first the regional school assessment and then the local school budget. I don't know if Isa wants to make a further comment.
Well, I may be mistaken, but I thought in the past, the major presentation was made outside both articles, but that's all right. Go ahead, your presentation is set, and you really can't change it at this point in time. So what your intention is, is to speak to the entire school budget, and then we'll vote on both articles, is that correct?
That's correct.
So you don't see a second presentation in front of the next article, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, go ahead. I think, given where we are now, this is the best thing to do, so go right ahead.
Okay, so again, as I was saying, this year's budget for FY 94 was essentially level-funded because of the loss of the override last spring, and the proposed budget for FY 95, which is $9,967,380, as Isa mentioned earlier, will require an override of $397,272. Now, Charlie, we'll get to the region here. As you will see, the pie chart for the FY 95 proposed regional school budget looks very similar to the Acton Public Schools. Again, contracted services, which is 16.8% of the proposed budget, includes the same categories as in the local budget, with some additional costs, such as debt service and building insurance, which are also included in the region. In the local school budget, those kinds of costs would be included in the municipal budget. Materials and supplies capture 6.2% of the proposed budget, and again, include items such as textbooks, library books, computer software, instructional materials, and much more. Again, like in the local school budget, equipment is only 0.1% of the budget, $6,323. What outlay we really have in the regional schools is in the school choice budget, which I'll talk about in a few minutes here. Again, as in the local school budget, personnel, which is salaries and fringe benefits, are the largest piece of the pie, almost 77% of the total budget. Again, continuing with the region, this bar graph for the regional schools' proposed budget shows the actual, again, FY 93 expenditures, the FY 94 adjusted budget under the Education Reform Act, and the proposed FY 95 budget, which is consistent with the minimum required spending under the new Education Reform Bill. The proposed FY 95 budget is up about 3.6%. Again, the proposed budget for next year for the region is up 3.6%. Because of the failed override last spring, this year's regional budget, the regional budget originally for FY 94, was originally reduced about 3.7% below the FY 93 level. The passage of the Education Reform Act this last year required that this year's budget be increased by $396,799. Most of this increase was funded by additional state aid, and an additional $60,000 was appropriated from the Acton Town Meeting last evening, and hopefully will be appropriated from the Boxborough Town Meeting next month. Roughly, it was about $30,000 from each of the two towns. Even with the increased spending this year, the FY 94 budget is still below the FY 93 budget level. This year's increased budget has been used primarily for technology purchases. Once again, the proposed FY 95 regional budget shows an increase of 3.6%, and again, is consistent with the minimum required spending under the Education Reform Act. This, again, sticking with the region here, we're talking about the regional school district. This slide shows you the proposed assessments for Acton and Boxborough for the FY 95 budget. As most of you are aware, town meeting votes their assessment. You don't vote, you won't be voting the budget, you vote your share. You vote the assessment of the regional school budget in Acton, and then next month, Boxborough will do the same thing. You begin, if you look at the top, you begin with the proposed budget, and then you subtract revenue from the state. If you take a look, you can see it's almost $2.6 million, and then subtract any other revenue that the district applies, and you end up with the assessments to the two towns. Acton's assessment is up 5.8%, Boxborough's assessment is up 15.3%. Now, again, the assessments are up an average, if you look at that bottom line, you'll see they're up an average of 7.4%, which is more than the increase in the proposed FY 95 budget of 3.6%. So the budget's up 3.6%, the average assessments are up 7.4%, and what we're talking about here tonight is the Acton assessment, which is up 5.8%. The reason for that is basically because state, federal, and other revenues that are being used to reduce the gross budget are less than the 94 level. And if you look at the dramatic increase in the Boxborough assessment, it really has to do with, because of their population. Their percentage of students continues to rise, where we have certainly a population problem at the elementary level, theirs clearly is a K-12 problem. For example, in 1983, Boxborough represented 10.9% of the 712 student population, and this year, they represent almost 18% of the 712 population. This is good news for Acton, I guess, because it allows basically cost to shift from the Acton column to the Boxborough column. Obviously, it's bad news for Boxborough, and probably this trend, as it has been going on for the past 10 years, will continue throughout the 1990s. Finally, I'd like to point out that the school committee has voted to use revenues of approximately $104,000, if you see that transfer from E&amp;D and federal revenue, to reduce the assessments, and that's not required under ed reform. If they hadn't done this, and from a legal point of view, they did not have to do it, the assessments would have been increased by that amount. They did it because they felt it was the right thing to do. Now, I'd like to move on back to the local schools, and then we'll have two slides, one for the local, one for the region, talking about school choice. The local regional schools, as most of you know, have participated in the state school choice program since 1992. Choice revenue has been used for two purposes. One, we have a separate school choice budget, or budgets, one for each district, and two, choice revenue has been used to reduce the cost of the region and local school budgets to the towns. Again, this slide is for the Acton Public School. The slide shows how choice revenue in the Acton Public School has been used from FY 92 through FY 95. In fiscal years 93 and 94, if you take a look at the yellow area, a total of $145,700 in choice revenue, school choice revenue, was used to reduce the cost of the appropriated budget to the town. The school choice budget, which is really the red and blue, with the red being basically personnel and the blue, other expenditures-- personnel, and the blue, other expenditures, has been used primarily to hire instructional staff, it's been used for instructional outlay, and I think, as Isa mentioned earlier, during the next few years, choice revenue will decline at the local level as the elementary enrollment continues to increase, and we simply will not have the excess capacity or space for additional choice students. So clearly, at the local level, we'll be going out of the choice business. Again, this slide shows the similar kinds of, the similar years for the regional school district. At the regional level, we've been able to accommodate many more choice students because we have had the space. For example, this year, we have two hundred and thirty-five school choice students. As in the Acton Public Schools, choice revenue has been used to support the school choice budget, which, again, is the red and the blue. And in FY ninety-three and ninety-four, approximately seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars of choice revenue was used to reduce the assessments for Acton and Boxborough. One of the changes in the, under the Ed Reform Act, which comes into play next year, is that we can no longer use choice revenue to reduce the assessments in the region or the local, or the cost of the local school budget. And the theory behind that, basically, is, from the state's perspective, that if we're giving you choice reimbursement or choice tuition, it ought to be used to educate those children. The school choice budget, again, in the region, has primarily been used to hire teachers and other instructional staff, been used for instructional outlay, some costs related to legal services and course reimbursement. At the regional level, the school choice program has made it possible to offer more curriculum, because we've been able to take in more students and had the funding that went along with that. We've been able to have, really, more curriculum, which has really benefited all our students, and has also made our schools somewhat more diverse, which is a benefit for all of our kids. We'll be able to continue to accept choice students in the region for a few more years, but as the elementary, and that's both in Acton and Boxborough, enrollment increases, as those enrollment increases move into the regional school district, move into the regional school system, choice students will be replaced by Acton and Acton/Boxborough students. And the staffing costs that are right now in the choice budget will go back into the appropriated budget, so we'll put in, certainly, an increased burden on the appropriated The final slide that I have here, basically, shows estimated revenues, both at the region and from the local schools, that we receive from non-appropriated sources that really positively impact the K-12 education program. We've already talked and taken a look at the school choice piece. We also receive corporate gifts, mostly from local corporations, and support from local businesses. Particularly, we have a very good relationship with the Acton Chamber, which we're proud of. We apply for as many state and federal grants as we can, many of them are approved. Parent fundraising, mostly through PTAs, PTOs, is greatly appreciated. Again, they purchase everything, from books to copiers. If you went around the elementary schools, you would see every elementary school, for example, has very nice outdoor play equipment. Those have all been, not only purchased, but actually built by the parent PTO communities. At the regional level, ABSAF, the Acton/Boxborough Student Activities Foundation, continues to provide great support through their annual fundraising drive. And this year, because of cuts in the appropriated budget, particularly in inter-scholastic sports, the ABSAF Board voted to go into their reserves, and has contributed a hundred thousand dollars to the school system. So we certainly say thank you, ABSAF. We recognize that's not something they'll be able to do next year. And finally, parent and community volunteers contribute their time, their energy, their ideas, and much more, and we are deeply appreciative of their involvement. So again, this gives you some idea of the estimated non-appropriated revenues, and you can see in the regions, a little over a million six, and in the local schools, around eight hundred thousand dollars.
Now that you have the large financial picture of both the regional schools and the local schools, I'd like to address some of the issues which have been raised with us over the last few months. Average class size is a construct that we use for planning purposes. We take the number of students and divide by the number of classes available. It usually does not describe reality. That can be more clearly seen by the piece at the bottom of the slide, where we show you which of the eighty-four sections in the Acton Public Schools are above what is considered within acceptable range, and which are below, how many are below. Size is important, particularly as we change what we're doing in classrooms to prepare students for the future. One advantage that our system has is that through open enrollment, we're able to balance class size. If we had neighborhood schools, as many other school districts do, we would need to redistribute students every year to maintain class size, and that's something which is not considered good for youngsters. Here you can see the, how the student numbers get reflected in staff numbers. For FY ninety-five, we're adding four more teachers to take care of the students who already are in our schools, and adding a fifth for the number projected in grade one. Schools are complex organizations with many tasks to be performed, and support personnel or non-certified staff are essential to the proper performance of the work of educating students. Non-certified staff, whom we often refer to as support staff, include special education assistants, kindergarten classroom assistants, clerical and secretarial personnel, custodians, maintenance people, and bus drivers. We have, of course, the parallel information for the Acton/Boxborough schools, the junior and the senior high school. And at the elementary level, it's very hard for us to add classes once the school year begins. At the secondary level, it's possible, because of the way the program operates, to add a class at the break of the year. At the elementary level, as I said before, we can balance class sizes. At the secondary level, we cannot so easily, because students choose courses. And as you can see, the range is, the number of courses below twenty and the number above twenty-five, they're really very, very large variances. We do have smaller classes at the secondary level, usually to support students who require more help in order to learn. We plan to add at the regional level staff because of increased enrollment. Here, as opposed to the elementary level, we are able to restore some cuts previously taken. The cuts taken at the regional level have been less visible to the outside world, but parents whose children have spanned the last six years can tell you that what is currently available at the high school represents less than what we had before. And this is important, because students need an established number of credits to graduate. They also need a certain distribution of courses for graduation, and all of these courses, they need to prepare themselves for the next level, whether it is work or higher education. As I mentioned to you, we have the same categories of non-certified staff or support staff. Here, again, we're talking about special education assistants, clerical staff, et This slide focuses on particularly the additional staff we're planning to add, first at the local level, and then at the regional level, those five teachers that I mentioned to you. And then, in addition, we add art, music, physical education, special education, and counseling services for every class that we open, or that we open. And here, again, we also add, the support staff referred to here are secretaries, special education assistants, and media center assistants. At the regional level, we are making some restorations, as I indicated, and in the academic areas, we're going to add pieces of teachers in all of the five major areas, English, social studies, science, math, and foreign language. Other certified teachers, in this case, include art, industrial arts and pupil services, and support staff, in this case, computer lab aids, clerical help, and the high school study assistant. One of the aspects of modern school life, which many people may not appreciate, simply because you don't live where we are each day, is the legal and the statutory need that we have to maintain detailed records and supply report after report to the state. We have a point one-two additional system-wide support staff for that reason. At the bottom of the slide, you see something called reallocated from Acton Public Schools. Bill mentioned that the school committees decided to use a hundred and four thousand dollars from the regional funds to reduce the assessments to the two communities. They didn't have to do it, they did do it. In addition, they decided to, after checking with legal counsel, move another hundred thousand dollars from the regional to the local level. That works out to be eighty-two thousand dollars for Acton and twelve thousand dollars, eighty-two thousand and eighteen thousand dollars for Boxborough. What we did is we reallocated some district-wide positions from the local school to the regional school to reduce the pressure on the local level. One of the reasons that we chose to show you the budget together, that is to say, show you both the local budget and the regional budget, is that even though they are two separate entities, and you will vote two separate items, they are, as are our children, inextricably connected as they move from kindergarten to twelfth grade. They don't stop being our children when they move on to the seventh grade. And we do keep the two records straight, and the two books straight, and the two school districts straight, but they are connected. This, we thought was just a beautiful way to show you that we have a diversity of role and responsibility. There are lots of different people who work in the school system, who contribute to the education of our children. And this is just a quick impressionistic way for you to see the amount of money we're spending on the various categories. And of course, the same for the regional level. I've heard a great deal of concern about the level of staffing in the central or system-wide administration since I've been here, and I must admit that when I first walked down the hall of the junior high school and saw how many offices were set aside for central administration or system-wide administration, I too was impressed. However, this is a case where perception can be deceptive. As I mentioned a minute ago, we run two school districts, and we also run a number of businesses out of the central office. This slide, I thank the artist, Jim Chase, shows you how many of the full-time equivalent positions in central administration are paid for out of the appropriated budget, that's the budget based on taxation, and how many are paid for out of non-taxation sources. We could write a check for transportation and remove two of those positions that are in the red. We could not have a director, and we could not have a dispatcher, but we probably would be paying more for transportation, and we'd have less control over our transportation. We could also write a check for food services and remove another one of those red stick figures. But again, we'd probably be paying more, and we would have less control. It's a decision that the school committees make. The next two slides, which are probably, oh yes, they're fine. The next two slides just give you the detail of those stick figures. We have eighteen point seven one full-time equivalents of system-wide administration and support, ranging from a superintendent's position to the secretarial support positions. This is in the appropriated budget, this is K-12. And we have ten point six six positions, ranging from coordinators to secretaries, again, in the system-wide, K-12 and non-appropriated budget. As you know, although we told you that the local school budget is going up eight point eight percent, the amount of the override is three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, two hundred and seventy-two, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars. This is, we arrive at this because there is, we proposed a number for what's called net school spending. Net school spending represents the operating budget, transportation, and the municipal costs of education that the town side pays. That whole amount together, our proposal and what the town side pays, is ten million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Ed Reform, as you have been told several times, has mandated a minimum. One of our concerns about this minimum is that we'll be understood as the maximum. It's not intended to be the maximum, it's intended to be the minimum. That minimum, based on the same categories, the operating budget, transportation, and the municipal side costs, is minimum ten million, eighty-eight thousand and six dollars. If you subtract those two numbers, you get three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars. And that's how we arrive at the level of the override. As I have indicated to you already, that number represents, our number, the top number, represents a cut of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars already taken before we showed you these numbers. To help us out, it's not a lot, but it's more than we got last year, we'll be getting what's called minimum aid, twenty-five dollars a student for next year. This is not an easy decision. I've been quoted as saying that I recommend this, and I, none of us recommends this, but it is clear that if we have no success with our override, we will have to cut. I happened to be out last night having dinner in a neighboring community when I overheard someone who clearly lives in Acton saying that she found nothing on the override list that was important, and so she didn't feel that she could vote for it. And as I looked at this list again, I want to tell you that we believe that we should keep the cuts away from the classroom as much as we can. However, at a certain point, support services for teachers, who then can concentrate on their students in their classrooms, is essential and needs to be preserved. And this list, which I'm nearing the end of, which is in the lamplighter, represents both direct instructional service to students, for example, the elimination of the art, music, and physical education programs, K through two, is direct services to children, as well as support services to teachers, such as the one-point-o library media coordinator, whose job it is to make sure the libraries in all the elementary schools are properly outfitted, correctly supplied, so that they support the curriculum. I feel that rather than being a recommendation, this is a small act of desperation, because the other choice we felt we faced was to increase class sizes, and they are already at the highest level they've been since nineteen seventy-seven. Of the items on this list, six are reductions in what we currently have, three are reductions in some items we proposed to add, but the latter is far smaller than the former. I think you've seen this kind of description before. This is what the personal impact will be. A parent who was a faithful attendee at school committee meetings asked if we could give the school systems a report card this year. Grading schools like grading students is neither easy, nor to be taken lightly, nor totally objective. We know that the innate quality of students, something that we fondly refer to as the gene pool, is central to the quality of a good school system. But also, there are other characteristics, and we've used the three that the Department of Education used when it was determining waivers, and we've added seven that the staff identified as the hallmarks of excellence. This is an excellent school system. It has the potential to get all As. It is at a crossroads, because while money is not the only answer to excellence, or quality, or even an A grade, without a sufficient amount of money, we are not able to ensure the excellence to which we've all become accustomed. Having said that, however, whatever happens, you know that all of us in the Acton Public Schools and the Acton/Boxborough Regional School District will continue to do our best to provide the best possible education for the youth of our community. Thank you. Thank you. Before we move on, I'd like to introduce the school committee to you. To my far left is Jean Butler, Mickey Williams, Steve Aronson. To my right is Lee Stuntz, who's chairperson of the Acton Public Schools, and Rick Sawyer. Thank you.
All right, now we will hear from the citizens. Do we want to hear from the boards first, is there a comment? Mr. Lake?
The board of selectmen, in keeping with tradition, takes no position on the school budget. We leave that to the school committee and the voters.
Finance committee, Mr. Olmsted.
The finance committee recommends approval.
Eighteen years, the first time, finance committee ever received a round of applause, I'll recognize the lady at the back first, then Mr. Cadillac.
I have a couple of comments and then one question. First comment, I think the selectmen have run an excellent town meeting this year, and I'd like to commend them for it. Last night Janet Murphy of Accord mentioned the changes made by the selectmen in their presentation and their budget format. I would also like to do the same for the school committee. And Dr. Zimmerman, Bill Ryan, Mac Reed, all of the people who have worked on, just a phenomenal effort to respond to the voters last year in making a clear budget presentation. The way I see the issues tonight has been, last year, well, let me back up, last year our issues were that, of Accord, the issues were that the money was being spent or raised, but the educational priorities were not being met. We do feel this year that the educational priorities are being met. And I'm pleased to see issues such as classroom instructional supplies, professional development, all of those areas being addressed this year. So congratulations, I think an excellent job has been done on this. My question. Section 29 of the Educational Reform Bill says that each school district may determine how to allocate any funds appropriated for the support of public schools without regard to the categories employed in calculating the foundation budget, which is to say that it hasn't changed any. And my question is, what guarantees do we have that once the budget has been passed, and assuming the override passes, that those educational priorities won't change?
Yeah, Dr. Zimmerman. Yes, please.
May I ask Mrs. Edri if your question is really, will the items on the override be the ones that remain out of the picture if the override is not successful?
No, my question is, if the override passes, assuming that it does, now everybody goes home and you have your bottom line numbers, and obviously the Educational Reform Bill does address some of the issues of the numbers, but I'm concerned that when everybody has gone away, and I'm not saying it's going to happen, I want assurance that it won't.
Well, as you know, we spent a lot of time developing this budget. It developed from grassroots up and also from top down, it went both ways. And we've thought a lot about what this budget represents, and we certainly believe that what is in here is worth paying for and worth doing, and would intend to follow the priorities established.
Mr. Cadillac.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a couple of comments on both budgets and then focus on the regional one. First of all, on the Educational Reform Act, I think several things have already been said. The selectmen have a rather clear position on specifically the feature of the Educational Reform Act, which mandates not just appropriating a certain amount of money, but spending it each year. The finance committee in their handout has taken a similar position, that's a dubious advantage to this town. I have talked to many people, no one that I've talked to thinks this is a good idea. And I would just offer the thought that those who are benefiting from it, which is obviously the school department, may find this to be long-range, a bigger problem than a benefit, because it's going to turn off an awful lot of people. I, for one, think it's a very bad idea for some bureaucrat somewhere, working with some formula from a consultant or whatever, which nobody seems to understand. Even our own school administrators have made the comment, I don't want to misquote anybody, that these people don't understand how regional schools work. These are the people that have mandated this year's school budgets, and therefore, as Mr. Hunter said last night, the entire town budget. This is not going to work long-term, and the sooner this gets changed, the better. Because yes, it will become a maximum rather than a minimum. Overrides will be looked at as yet another way of funding this mandate, although it's not true, as you just saw. It's going to work against us. I hope our state representative Pam Rezor is here or listening, because a couple of years ago, I have her pamphlet, if anybody wants to see, she made the point that she's working on bills to make state mandated mandates less onerous, her word, for the town. This wasn't one of them. This has to change, or we're going to be totally at the mercy of some magic formula. Going now to the regional budget, I think this is the budget, by the way, that's what it is because of the mandate. It's clearly several hundred thousand dollars higher than it would have been if we did not have this provision of the Educational Reform Act. Take you back a year, when we were here, looking at the handout from the school committee last year, planning this year's budget, they made excellent predictions on the one thing that really drives school budget, which is enrollment. Their projected enrollment at the junior high was 617, the actual was 630 this year, up 13, which are all, 12 of them are choice students, which they accepted. At the senior high school, the projection was 1254, the actual enrollment is 1255, you can't get much better than that. The enrollment projections were excellent. The staff projections, this may interest you, at the junior high, the projected certified staff for this current year, that we voted on last year, was 4317, full-time equivalents, a terrible term but a useful one. The actual certified staff this year is 4607 at the junior high, an increase of 2.9 over what we thought we were voting for, somewhat Jan Edri's point. At the senior high school, the projected staff was 7398. We are at 7917, 5.27 higher. The point is, we found money in this current year's budget, and it wasn't the extra Reform Act money to fund the things we wanted, which is teachers in classrooms. This is good. Also, if you look at some of the projections of what would be lost if last year's override didn't pass, I won't give you the numbers, I have them, but I will be accused of being more of a troublemaker than I am. Those numbers did not come to pass. This regional school budget is driven by the Educational Reform Act, and I think what you should keep in mind is without the Educational Reform Act, between the two school systems, we would not need an override. I can debate that with anybody who wants to. I think those who think that the Educational Reform Act is going to help these schools, I'm repeating just a little bit, are going to have to convince the people that are being asked to increase their taxes by voting for an override, that this really is so. And that's going to be a tough thing to do. I will speak to the local budget on the next article. But what you should know, that the regional school budget, where $400,000 this year, went to that little sliver that was called equipment, all this nice equipment, I assume is part of it, that's good. But all of those things are not on this very nice elaborate detailed budget which you get. There is choice money, there's this extra $400,000. We're in pretty good shape at the region, and once again, the amount that we're being asked to appropriate is what it is, only because of the Educational Reform Act.
Mr. Hearn. Dennis Ahern, 298 Central Street. Mr. Moderator, I would like to make a motion that we lay this on the table long enough to get a cup of coffee, but I don't think anybody would second it. Now, I'm not a doctor, but I'm not sure what we're talking about when Dr. Zimmerman is talking about cohort survival. But I do know that there are a lot of people in Acton with and without cohorts who are trying to survive in today's economy. And I believe that our school system, which we have faithfully given to over the years, is a victim of its own success. We see this picture of how many additional schoolchildren there are, and where are these people coming from and why? They're coming because we have such excellent schools. So it's sort of like a catch-22. We're doing a great job, but we're really getting socked in the end, and I don't know how this trend ought to ever be reversed.
Lady at the back.
Kathy Campbell, Minuteman Road. I'd like to comment first on Mr. Cadillac's presentation. I find it rather annoying that he's speaking so much about the Educational Reform Act that is not what we are here to vote on tonight. While many of us may have opinions about other things that are not the subject of a vote tonight, we would like to focus on the issue at hand, which is the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District budget. It seems to me that it would be rather silly for this community to cut off its nose despite its face, which is what it seemed to me Mr. Ahern was suggesting. I would prefer to have a good education system rather than scaring away new homebuyers. And I would like to suggest that we move the previous question.
Well, now, unfortunately, the motion's out of order, because we have a little rule in the town that says you can't make a speech and then move the previous question. I'll recognize the gentleman at the front.
I'm disturbed that there is an undercurrent of appealing to what is justifiable anger at the state and taking it out on the school committee. We cannot here undo the Educational Reform Act. The place to do that is in the state legislature, and the times to do that are when we elect our representatives to the state legislature. For some of us who are disturbed about the fiefdom of Senator William Bulger, we have to deal with that when we can deal with that. Now, I think it's, there are a lot of valid objections to what the Educational Reform Act has done. One should not lose, however, the idea of the other side of the question. Remember the suit that Brockton brought, and remember what the children in Brockton were entitled to. So it has cut both ways. The way it's administered appears to be terrible. To have someone who is willing to explain what an act means if the town pays $500 an hour to the person who wrote it is grotesque. But I suggest we deal with that in the appropriate arena.
There you go.
I'm concerned.
Lady at the back.
I'm concerned about the selectmen's presentation, which I think seemed a little biased, and clearly Mr. Cadillac's view about the, giving the impression that the financial difficulties that are faced in the town of Acton are simply a function of ed reform and of the Acton Public Schools.
Excuse me, let me stop you for a moment, because I've kind of let the discussion be pretty free-ranging tonight, and it is getting late. We have article, this article on the table, which if I put my glasses on, I can see is 28. And I'd like to have you limit your comments, and everybody else, just Article 28, and not talk about some extraneous incident or law or lack of law, whatever. Go ahead, ma'am.
It does focus on both issues, because I think what we have to keep in mind is that the financial situation of the town is primarily a function of the constraints we faced under Proposition Two and a Half, where the costs of running the town from inflation, let alone growth, have been limited in terms of the ability to generate the revenue that can support the kinds of expenditures that we have. I'd like to raise the point that even if the per pupil expenditure as mandated under education reform, and what everybody seems to be somewhat concerned about, even if we reach that level, as Dr. Zimmerman stated, that is simply not adequate for meeting the financial needs at this point in time of the Acton school systems. And while a lot of blame seems to be placed on ed reform, I would like to state that as much of that is a function of the town and the fact of town growth. And it was raised earlier by Aunt Fenton, who said that we are unable to limit growth. But I certainly believe that we can do something more in terms of controlling the financial needs of the town and of the school with any new growth that is developed.
Ma'am, I'm going to stop you once again. We're talking about Article 28, and I'd really like you to confine your remarks to Article 28, either for or against. I'll ask a question regarding.
My point is that if the town is continuing to permit growth, I think there is a commitment that goes along with that growth to provide the full range of services to the citizens of Acton. And that includes town services, police, fire, highway, it includes the regional school system, and includes the public school system.
Excuse me, ma'am, I'm going to stop you for the last time.
And I have asked this town leader to support both the regional, motion for regional funding and for the town funding.
Okay, I'm going to have to call a halt here, because you're not talking about Article 28.
I'm talking about Article 28, which is approval of the budget for the regional school system.
Thank you. Mr. Grohling.
I apologize for having been absent for the last five years, but some things have changed. I will tell you that the presentations from both school committees and the selectmen are outstanding, and compared to five years ago, I applaud them all. Absolutely outstanding. They have clearly been listening to the people. With regard to this budget, I don't understand why everybody's so quick to leap the fence. I haven't heard a thing from anybody saying, "We shouldn't do this." Everybody I've heard talk, even Mr. Cadillac, hasn't said anything against this budget. I think we're all in favor of this budget, and I definitely think we should get on with the vote, and we should pass it.
Gentleman, Clark.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I was going to suggest going into Boston and throwing some tea in the harbor, or perhaps, better yet, some representatives and senators. I hear a lot of numbers here, and I've got a book here that must have cut down an entire forest. Without this mandated amount that the state has come up with, just out of curiosity, what would the real budget have been? What could it have been? Can somebody answer that?
We'll answer the question. Dr. Zimmerman?
It would have been approximately $200,000 less next year.
$200,000 less. Mr. Jarboe.
Move the previous question. We'll hear a second.
Do I hear a second? All in favor of cutting off debates, say aye. All say no. Debate is cut off. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye. All say no. Motion carries. Move to Article 29. Mrs. Stuntz moves that the town appropriate the sum of $9,967,380 for the Acton Local Schools for the period, July 1st, 1994 to June 30th, 1995. However, of this amount, the appropriation of $397,000 shall be contingent upon the passage of an override question at a town election pursuant to the provisions of Section 21CG of Chapter 59 of the General Law's Proposition 2 and 1/2. Do I hear a second? Moved and seconded. Mrs. Stuntz?
If there are any questions, obviously, the presentation was done K through 12. If there are any questions, Dr. Zimmerman, Bill Ryan, or the School Committee is very willing to answer them.
Gentleman at the back microphone.
Josh Geller on Willow Street. It's just a general question. As we get more people coming to town who have children in the school system, I'd just like to have a number to see why we have to have overrides. Why the taxes that the new residents pay don't cover the students or their children? Can you just give me some numbers?
They're more than metaphysics now, I think. Well, Mr. Grohl, let someone else do it first, then you take a shot at it. Mr. Hunter.
It's fairly easy. The per pupil costs are around $5,000 some odd dollars a year. If you move in with one child, there are not too many houses. There are some where the annual tax bill is that high. If you have two children, obviously, you really need to have a big and expensive house to cover a tax bill. You just, an average house does not pay enough in real estate tax each year to cover a child, generally speaking, in the school system. So if you have in movers, and particularly if you have in movers with multiple children, it's not pay-as-you-go. Those of us that, like myself, who have had children in the school system, are paying now for still the years that our kids were in school. It's just not a pay-as-you-go. So the math is very simple. Mr. Moderator, the Board of Selectmen has a comment on this article.
Go ahead.
As Norm said in regard to the regional article, the Board of Selectmen traditionally has not commented on school budgets. I would caveat that now that we have ed reform in that we will, I believe, continue our practice, and I'm certainly continuing it here, on not commenting on the school budget insofar as it's at the minimum ed reform level, the B-budget level. Clearly, I think the Board of Selectmen is going to have to take the position that when you go above the B-budget level, as the public school system is proposing to do this year through this contingent vote, that it does affect the town, and we may well take a position. As you know, it is planned, if this article is voted with the contingency in it, it is planned and expected, I believe, that this board will vote to put the override question on a subsequent ballot, and there'll be an election, and we projected the date and the warrant. I don't recall it at the moment. The Board of Selectmen has expressed its appreciation. School Committee, as they've indicated, they moved $104,000 at the regional level to reduce the assessment. We, in some fashion, have reciprocated in kind because we were able to pass over Article 12, because in very recent days, we got a waiver from the ed reform requirement for this year to retroactively appropriate money into the public school budget. Technically, under that waiver, although I promised the state we wouldn't do it, we could have moved back substantially from what was voted last year. But essentially, we ducked a bullet this year of having to give $48,000 out of free cash, which we really didn't have, for the '94 school budget. The same time, the Board of Selectmen, if they'd wished to press the issue, could have insisted that the base figure that's being carried into '95 be reduced by that $48,000, which would have required the School Committee, if they wanted to maintain the same budget, to come in at a 445 or 440, whatever the math works out, override, rather than 397 this year. And that $48,000 increment that we're agreeing to pass into the schools for next year will be in the base forever. So we'll quickly come out behind on that. But basically, we're making no comment on the B-budget, and we anticipate we'll hold a hearing, as we did last year. But I would anticipate that the Board of Selectmen, if this meeting votes the contingency for the override, will put that on a ballot for a special election. As you know, the Board of Selectmen is the gatekeepers to the Proposition 2 and 1/2 override ballot. And we would anticipate going through the same process that we did with the after-town meeting election last year. If that process plays out, it's designed so that there will be no need for a further town meeting. There will be a special election if you all want it.
The Fire and Ice Committee wish to make a comment. Mr. Olmstead.
Well, we recommend the approval of this, but actually, every point I've heard has been valid. The Education Reform Act is a given. We have to live with that. We should change it. Work to change it. And it probably is true that if it had not been there, somehow, the money would have been found to make it all happen without an override. But that's not the case today. So we recommend approval as has been proposed.
I'll recognize the lady at the side microphone.
I'm Kathy Welsh, Estherbrook Road. I just would like to put the thought out that we think about the education of our children as an investment in the future of our society and our town, and not the individual responsibility of individual parents or families, whether they be new to Acton or long-term residents. And I think that this budget has been well thought out in the bottoms-up and top-down way, and I support this article.
I'll take the gentleman to the front microphone.
I'm Dan Dietrich, Cedar Terrace. I had a very specific question. It looks like the kindergarten assistant salaries are all cut in half. Can you explain that to me? I'm looking at Merriam School, page 1, question number 22. Salary number 783. Oh, it's page 26.
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Zimmerman.
The salaries that look as if they've been cut are in the choice budget.
Are the choi-, okay, so this is, we still have kindergarten assistants?
Yes. As I think both Bill and I tried to explain a little bit, what partly makes the schools so complicated is that we have a variety of sources for our revenue. And as Bill indicated in that slide, we do pay for personnel out of choice budget, as well as out of the appropriated budget.
I just noticed that Dr. Zimmerman pointed out to me a small technical error. The figure that was read in the article was $397,000. It should have been $397,272. Is that correct, Dr. Zimmerman? It doesn't seem like a huge amount, but the easiest way to deal with is to amend the figure. And I'll take an amendment to that fine. It's been ruled and seconded to change the number to 397,272. I won't take any discussion. All in favor, say aye. All say no. The amendment is passed. Mr. Cadillac. No, wait a minute. You've spoken once to this, have you? No, you have not spoken to this article.
Not yet.
I've got a lot of help again here, and I need it. I'm going to, just for the fun of it, take the gentleman in the back, then you, Mr. Cadillac.
Thank you very much. My name's Tad Lawrence, live in Prospect Street. I think people like to get value for their money. And I teach at a private independent school where the tuition is over $15,000. And I think the residents of Acton get extraordinary teaching value for their dollar. And I think we owe the School Board, and especially the teachers of Acton, a great round of thanks for the education they do for our children.
I would also like to make a comment, and that is, I see this override budget as a very status quo minimalist override. And I would just like to suggest in the future that the in-town meeting will be given a set of options for a budget such as this nature, or one that is larger and, in fact, does accomplish the challenges that it's going to be facing the school system as it goes forward and grows and meets the needs of our students in the future. I don't think we're really doing justice to our students to just have a budget that is crafted on the basis of, "Well, it's the best we can expect to get this year, so let's just put that one, run that one up the flagpole. Let's give the people a real choice."
Undaunted by the help that I got. Have you spoken Article 29?
No, I haven't.
I didn't think so. You spoke to 28. Mr. Cadillac.
Thank you. This happens to be a year where I think the School Committee could make an excellent case because of the increased enrollment in K through 6, that additional money is needed. And with your permission, Mr. Moderator, I like to put this in all historical perspective. Two of you slides.
Go ahead.